Here.
Counselor Tassinieri?
Here.
Counselor Swob?
Here.
Counselor DeRoz. He is here. Vice President Belcher?
Here.
President Luteri?
Yes.
Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge by Counselor Swob.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There have been minutes distributed from the February 25 meeting. There are motion to approve. Motion by Vice President Bellcher. Second by Counselor Munson.
As corrected.
Any discussion on the minutes?
As corrected. I approve.
Seeing none further, as amended, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, the ayes have it. Thank you. General information and recommendations, I had asked Chief Wiley to come before us, give us a brief presentation and whatever you might have. Talk a little bit about 911 response with a third city town added in, making sure that the makeup or the composition potentially of the operators handling the calls, any education that's done on various cities and knowing landmarks and streets and such, and also some discussion or quick discussion on emergency or evacuation plan.
I thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the council for asking me to be here. Just a brief history, just to bring people up to speed on the rec and cell. In 2017, we entered with the Metro North Regional Emergency Communication Center with Revere Police and Fire, Winter Police and Fire. And it is located, the rec is located at the Revere Police Department Headquarters in Revere Beach Parkway. When it was built and when they were first housed there, it was not intended to be a permanent location for them. Winter's assessment in there to the rec right now is about $440,000 a year. Revere's assessment is about $1.6 million a year, and it's based on call volume. The rec is overseen by a board of directors, operates a lot like this board itself. Right now, I'm currently the chairman of the board. There are seven members on the board, chiefs of police and fire from each community, the mayor of Revere, the town manager for Winter, who is designee, and every year, there's a seventh member that alternates between Revere and Winter. So that makes up the odd numbers. The Chelsea, last week, the Chelsea City Council unanimously voted 11 to nothing to sign its entrance to an IMA to join the Metro North rec. It's approximately two-year project. There'll be a major rehabilitation of the McKinley School over in Revere, paid for completely by state and grant money. So it's not going to cost the town anything. That'll change the composition from, right now, most of the time, five or six between dispatchers and call takers to nine in the daytime, excuse me, nine at night and 10 in the daytime. So it increases the number of both call takers and dispatchers. One of the issues that came up, or was brought up in public comment last week, was there was an issue that happened approximately five years ago on a call where some of the, or the dispatcher or the call taker that took the call wasn't familiar with some of the landmarks in Winter. Since that time, we've gone through a couple of different iterations of both board of directors and directors, executive directors of the rec. About 18 months ago, we brought Whitney Morgan as the executive director of the rec right now, and since she came aboard, there's been a big turnover in the direction of the rec. It's much more professional, it's really well-run, it's a very, very well-run organization. One of the things they implemented was ride-alongs in their training session. I gave each of your counselors a two-page package that she put together that explains the training process. One of the things is the geography training, dispatchers must know the communities they serve to ensure rapid and accurate dispatching. Either the executive director or deputy director personally take new hires through the dispatch areas to familiarize themselves with key locations. Dispatchers must be able to recognize areas like for Winter, the Five Sisters, the Landing, the Kilmartin Path, et cetera, immediately to avoid any delay in emergency response. One of the issues that came up in thinking about some of the calls that happened years ago, if you called 911 four or five years ago from a cellphone, that call was routed to Framingham, to the state police. All of those calls went to Framingham and the state police. Two years ago, so we rerouted everything. All the calls in this area go to the rec in Revere, all the cellphone calls. So they no longer go to Framingham, it's much more direct. So these people who are answering their phones would be familiar with local landmarks. So in a typical case, when you call 911, you'll call and the call taker will answer the phone, 911, what's your emergency? You'll explain to them, you know, somebody will say what the emergency is, and call takers will then forward the call to the responsible agency. If it's Winter, if it's Winter, if it's police, it's fire, maybe it's both, could be both, could be both police and fire, could be police-fire, could be Harbor Master. They also coordinate with the state police, they coordinate with Coast Guard, they do a tremendous job over there. Right now, it's four dispatchers, two call takers, plus supervisors, and if it's in the daytime, the assistant director and the director themselves. The board also has a quality control review that we do quarterly. Anytime we have any call that comes up that we have any concerns about, they're very responsive to us. We call the director, I speak to her three or four times a week. I spoke to her a couple of times today. They're very responsive to us, they're very good to us, they, anytime we have any questions or concerns, if we have an issue that came up with a call and we wanted recordings of it, we'll pull the tapes on it, they get back to us immediately and do it. We do things slightly different than Revere Fire does, Winter Police does things slightly different than Revere Police, but they're very, very good at adapting to the different protocols and policies that we all use. We try to make them as uniform as possible, but it's impossible to make them completely the same. That in a nutshell is how the Metro Rec works. It's, like I said, a two-year project, four Chelsea to come onboard, major, major renovation at the McKinley School, all state and grant-funded, it's probably in the neighborhood of $14 or $15 million, and brings, it's in likelihood, you know, I don't know how anybody can say 10 dispatchers in a room isn't better or safer than six dispatchers in a room or four dispatchers in a room. So it increases the numbers, they're all capable of jumping on each other's calls. If a major incident is happening in Chelsea, nothing's happening in Winter. They're able to help the Chelsea people take control of phone calls and dispatching. They're all able to share and work with each other. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council on the rec before I talk about.
Any questions on the rec? Counselor Swob?
This is a personal question. If you have an area code that is not 611, sorry, 617, does that matter in your cellphone?
It still passes.
What is registered, what's registered in Winter? If you're registered with that phone number in Winter, then your call is treated the same way regardless of.
If you call from a cellphone, it's going to go to the nearest, nearest point of contact, nearest dispatch center. So if you call in Winter, you could be from out of state visiting, and have, you could be from Texas and have a cellphone registered in Texas. If you call 911 from the town of Winter, it's going to get picked up in Revere.
Fantastic. This is great news. Thank you for the report.
Counselor Ayala.
Thanks. Chief, just, so how does it work if, let's say, an individual from Winter becomes aware of an emergency on their phone but is outside of Winter, and then tries to call in 911? Let's imagine they're visiting rather than Framingham, but they need to get someone, they've been made aware of a situation, they need someone to respond to it, how does?
You would call, so if you called and you were in Framingham, you would get picked up in Framingham, and they could patch you through to the rec in Revere.
So it works that way?
Yes.
All right. Thanks.
Counselor Munson.
Thank you, Chief Wiley. This is great, and looks like a win-win for everybody. I had just a random question about when a person calls for an emergency, is their location made aware through technology, or do they need to reveal that location?
It's both. If they, if they choose to ping the phone because the person's not able to give them, the person may be able to call 911, but they're not able to communicate. They're able to ping the phone, and we've practiced this, we've done it, they can ping it to within five feet of where they are. If you call on your house phone or landline, it's going to come up immediately, before they even pick up the phone, the address number's up on the screen. They know exactly where you're calling from. Cellphone's a little bit different. They have to be, if they, if you're not able to give the information, they're able to ping it, and it's very, very quick and it's extremely accurate. And one thing I wanted to say before I forgot was, I believe it's the 18th?
Yeah.
The 18th, there'll be representatives from the rec to come here to give an overview of what's going on. It'll be, at that point, there's two votes left on the IMA, there's the board of council here and the council in Revere.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we'll move on.
The other thing was, there was a, a meeting that I had last week with Boston OEM, the chief of Boston Office of Emergency Management, who did reach out, he reached out to me and wanted to talk about evacuation plans and routes, things of that nature. So we set up a call with who we thought were the relevant players in this, in the, we didn't have everybody show up for the call, and we thought that we needed to actually broaden it a little bit more. We did have a representative from the state police, but they were from Logan Airport, and we wanted to also have somebody from Revere Beach. So we needed to reach out to state, so we didn't have anybody from Boston PD that came on. And so it was just a very, very brief meeting where we all talked a little bit about the challenges that we face. And there is another meeting, it has not been scheduled yet, but I was with Chief Jordan the other day at a different meeting, and we both communicated the need to get this forward and have another meeting. So that being said, I just wanted to, this is, there were questions as to whether or not we had an evacuation plan. I've heard from a lot of people that it doesn't exist, is there a plan, is there a, this is the plan, this is the town of Winter's evacuation plan, it has been in place for 12 years, it gets, it gets reviewed and revised every five years, just like the SEP. SEP refers to the evacuation plan, the evacuation plan refers to the SEP. And they do both, but I just, for the, we talked about the 72 hours and people should be prepared to shelter in place. One of the, this comes up multiple times in this document. Strategy one would be shelter in place. It is the fastest protective action to employ, it's less costly and disruptive, it's preferable in poor weather conditions, it's not safe in all hazards, it's a short-term protection only to depend on resources available in location. A lot of times, it goes through here multiple times, it tells you, your primary, primary care should be shelter in place if possible. We absolutely have the ability to move people within the town, which is what, much more likely that we would move people from one point in town to another point in town than to say we would evacuate the town of Winter. It's extraordinarily unlikely that that would ever happen. I can't think of a scenario where we would evacuate the entire town of Winter. But moving people from point A to point B, from an incident in the Highlands to a shelter at the coming school, from Point Shirley due to a storm to the coming school, from that point to a longer-term shelter if necessary, is possible. But the idea or the thought that we would evacuate tens of thousands of people at any point in time is unlikely, extremely unlikely. So that in a nutshell is the evacuation plan. Again, this, like, like the SEP, due to its operational nature, is not a public, it's not a public disclosed document, it's not for public dissemination, but if the council, perhaps in an executive session, if the council president thinks so, we'd be happy to share it with you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you again, Chief, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. See you on the 13th.
Public comment. Mr. Dow.
Madam President, I appreciate the follow-up, Chief. I do have, as far as this is concerned, about the evacuation, and I think if it was, if I was in a situation, I would stay in my house. I have three or four of those masks that have the round ventilators. I don't know if I have the correct filters in them, but condition, so I have to find out that information also. But I'm wondering if it's a shelter in place that is highly recommended, maybe everybody should have some information about what they should have in their house, concern, thank you, I have another topic, in their house in order to survive, especially on the truck group. Thank you very much, appreciate it. I gave a handout to the council, and there's an elevation and there's a footprint on the handout. This picture's been taken too many times, so, but down in the bottom right-hand corner it says 6717. And this is the, this is the proposal that the council person, A person A, made onstage at the forum at the Winter High School. You can see the layout, there's micro units to the left on the picture, at the top of Waldemar Ave, Pauline Street, there's micro units lining the street on the, on the bottom of the hill, and then, and then they go all the way up to the baseball facility. And then, this is a pretty good picture, I'm seeing it with our glasses, and it seems that there's about 75 or 80 parking spaces connected to this facility that was proposed by a person sitting at the end of the bench here. I don't know if I can say names here, I'm very confused about how to get information through to people about what was proposed there. Right now, the only piece of land, you know, the top of the street, Waldemar and Pauline Street, the micro units up there belongs to the town. The rest of this picture is Ingleside Park. It's covered, can't use it for any other reason. Hartwell 97, disposition land, it was a vote taken in the state of Massachusetts to protect open space and parkland, we have to go by that, it's the law, many people mention the law. And the final picture, I know I'm running out of time, and I don't want to get that though, it's obnoxious. The last picture is this picture. And this is, this is a picture of everything that A person A has done concerning the bus, bus stop cover, you know, that was, a letter was written to, you know, I don't know where it last name, it's not, that A person A demanded that they build bus stop covers at all the bus stops. So so far, from A person A, this is what we have for his epistome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Scott Mahoney, right precinct three. I just wanted to commend the folks that have put together the information regarding the funding of the school budget override and also the debt exclusion of the fire station. The information's clear, it's concise, it's articulate, it's easy to follow, and it's out there. So there's no reason why anyone should have confusion at this point about these initiatives. I just also wanted to say regarding the fire station, while being able to visit the fire stations is important, look at the buildings, all of that, something I think we've become a little numb to is the fact of our proximity to Logan Airport. And the fact of the matter is, driving here tonight, there were six flights over Yewell Beach stacked up waiting to commit to Logan. So I started thinking, what could happen if one out of those six went down on Point Shirley? Our fire department has to have everything possible to be able to manage a situation like that. And even though we're going to have assistance from other communities, from East Boston, Massport, whatever, if a plane goes down on the point or anywhere in Winter, the fire department has to have everything it needs, equipment, you know, every, just everything. And that includes a new fire station. So what we have obviously is not adequate. But I think we've kind of become numb to the fact of our proximity to Logan and also the MWRA facility at Dear Island. So I just wanted to point that out because I really think this, that needs to be taken into consideration. People need to take that to heart when they step up to vote on this initiative on April 5.
Thank you, Scott. Any other public comment? Yes, Tom?
Tom, here, and precinct three, also your favorite tree warden, and the town manager is representative on the permit commission. You know, we talk a lot about flooding, but I want to talk about the opposite and how it affects trees, that is droughts. We had a drought in the fall, it was weird to have a drought in the fall. So how do we respond if we have a drought, maybe in the summer, maybe July, maybe, we don't know? So to do that, because our DPW doesn't have enough people to water all the trees in town if we have an extended drought, we've started, along with the tree committee, a doctor tree program to recruit citizens in the town when and if there's a drought, to water the trees close to them. So I want to spread the word about that, and I'm taking this moment to do that, and I hope everyone will, will do that, and I hope it just rains regularly all summer. We don't have a drought.
Thank you. Any, Karen?
Karen Travis, precinct two. Mine is just a informational thing, it was only purely for myself. This month, I sat down to do my bills, and I noticed that I had to pay my trash on the 3rd, my water on the 17th, my excise on the 31st. I, I just wonder if there's any way that that wouldn't happen again? I know that the, the excise is only once a year, but I didn't know one of those, the water can't be moved because that's a quarterly, but maybe the trash or the excise could be moved out so that there's three things that don't come up in the same month?
Thank you. Anything else, Karen?
You're going to talk about the fire station, so I won't say anything.
Any other public comment? Anything on Zoom? Nothing?
No.
Correspondence, Denise?
I have received none. Nope.
All right. Committee reports, Firehouse Building Committee has not met since our last meeting. We do have a meeting scheduled for next Monday, March 10, at the Hother Hearing Room at 5:30. I encourage people to attend. The website is up and running, winterfirestation.com. I believe this Saturday, there will be open houses at both stations, Shirley Street and Pauline Street, 9 to 12. We're encouraging adults to come to these, just for safety reasons. Take a look at the conditions that firefighters have been dealing with for the past half a century, century. We encourage you to stop by, there is a, a sign for people who haven't seen a proposed, at the, at the old middle school showing a proposed new fire station on that same location. We encourage people to take a look at that. Again, I would ask you to go to the website, firewinterfirestation.com for more information. You could always contact Firehouse Building Committee if you have any questions, if you'd like to host a coffee, just informational session. I'm sure people from the committee would be more than happy to, to help you out with that. So thank you for that. School Department report, the school department met last evening. The vast majority, if not all, the meeting revolved around the override. There was public comment concerning the override. There's also a draft letter that will be going into the transcript, I believe, hopefully this week, from the school committee, just talking a little bit about what's at stake with the override and, again, just educational information, but what was put out, obviously a yes for the 3.5, would enable the schools to have a level service budget and maintain all the advances that they've made over the past several years, maintain class sizes, maintain user fees as they are, maintain drama services, co-curricular activities, AP classes and such. Incredibly needed, a no on question two, which is the 3.5 million dollar override would result in potential loss of two teachers, two teaching positions per grade K to eight, class sizes from the low twenties up to the high twenties to low thirties, cuts in AP courses, special programs in foreign languages, elimination of up to 12 additional staff positions across the district, potential loss of middle school athletics, steep increase in fees for user fees for participation in high school athletics, reductions in instructional materials, technology, textbooks and software licenses, and higher fees for after-school programs, club, extracurricular activities and preschool. So, you know, they're obviously in a very precarious situation. We encourage people to get the information needed and to make an educated decision on that. Question three on the ballot is concerning a 1.45 million dollar amount of money to go into an education stabilization fund. This would enable the school to maintain their services, to look at potential pitfalls that you can, you just can't budget for, whether it be crazy increases in healthcare, transportation costs, increase in, in special needs activities for out, out-of-district placement, enables us to maintain the bar for a much longer period of time for the residents of Winter. So the school committee urges you to, to consider these items and to, again, get educated, ask questions, and obviously vote on April 5, Saturday.
Town manager report.
Chairman, yes, add one thing to your report. I, I think what was also said last night, which helped me, and maybe would help other people understand, why all of a sudden 3.5? We have been short on a level service budget for the last five years. So every year, we've asked for at least a level service budget, but starting in 2001, we've been short, and last year, we were short $1,492. So what happens with that is you end up only being able to fund mandated programs, and you must fund mandated programs. Now we're at a point, without some more resources, we're not going to be able to fund mandated programs. So that means we'll definitely have to go into the town budget to do that, or we won't be able to open the schools. So we'll do that, but that weakens everybody. And I thought that was, that helped me understand why the 3.5. So if anybody asks you, it didn't just come now, you know, it's been coming for the last five years. Thank you.
Thank you. Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Obviously, we met last week, so there wasn't too much, sort of an abbreviated report. Couple of things I wanted to highlight. In line with them announcing the new ferry service last week, the MBTA did reach out to extend the lease, as they required to do, for one additional year. There are two additional one-year options, extensions on there that could take it out to 2028, but right now, they like to extend it one year, which would have it expire on 6/30/26. You know, that agreement, we've had no expenses since they've taken it over, they take care of all the maintenance on it. We gave them a great boat with two new engines and two new transmissions on it, and they've been running it. This year, I don't think they're going to use it on the Winter run. My understanding is, unless that changes, is they've gotten some additional money in the budget, I think $900,000, that they're going to use to get an additional ferry that they'll use on the inner harbor run with Winter and use the boat somewhere else. So they'll be using it for a ferry service, maybe just not dedicated to Winter, but that's, it's their boat, they can do what they want with it. So right now, it's under release, so. That, we'll take care of that and make sure that's in line. With the IFB for the, was supposed to be due this week for the fire station, we had a few follow-up questions that we had to reach out to the structural engineer, so we extended the deadline to April 10 for those bids to come in. Once they come in, we'll certainly review them, but we wanted to make sure we had time for the structural engineer to answer the questions thoroughly and get the information back out to the potential bidder. So as everyone knows, and we've announced in the prior meetings, we have taken steps to minimize the weight on that floor, we pulled out an engine, thanks to the chief and his efforts. We keep in the old DPW garage one of our engines, so it's close by, but we only have one engine being stored there all the time, so, you know, for a safety factor, we wanted to make sure we did that. And certainly open any questions with regard to anything on the report.
All right. And we'll just, and I'll just bring up quickly that RKG is still doing a cost impact analysis in terms of potential impact of units, right? It's going to be a plug-and-play. We tell them the number of units and we'll be able to plug in a number. So we will have that by the second meeting in April?
That's the goal, yeah. They said we, probably mid-April, they were shooting to have that done, yeah.
And obviously, there's, there's been talk concerning an exemption for unfunded mandates, and this is leading to that because we need to know the impact.
Need to know the cost, right.
So we can take our next steps and, to see what the actual unfunded mandate would be, instead of just not having a number. But I'll open it up to any questions on the town manager.
But I'll open it up to any questions on the Town Managers Report. Council, might send, and then we'll...
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. How are you?
Good.
I wanted to just ask about the fire station on Pauline. It looks like there's going to be, that floor is going to be resolved and repaired within probably a couple of months, I'm guessing?
No.
No?
We still got to wait for the bids to come in, then we're going to have to get financing. I mean, I'm expecting, you know, given what happened in Chelsea and whatnot, it'd be a substantial repair. So, I mean, we're looking at, this will be one of the options to look at, but, you know, depending upon, obviously, how the vote goes and things like that, we may look at some other options, too, that might be less expensive, so. But we wanted to get these prices in, so we know what the, this fix would be.
That leads to my real question is, which is, you know, pending the approval of the fire station, do we have any set agenda with the two fire stations that currently exist as to what their plan is, what we would do with it as a town? Do we have anything on the agenda? And is it included in, and if so, is it included in the verbiage of the questions on the special election?
I'm sure the council's seen the ballots. Not on the verbiage, but that's certainly for the council to decide. I mean, what most towns do is, once they, you know, get the vote or get the approval to move forward with the debt exclusion, you know, you could set up, like the council president's talked about before, you could set up a reuse committee to talk about what you want to do with those buildings next, whether you want to put them up for sale, reuse for the town use. I mean, for another town, you know, entity, I mean, there's all sorts of options on the table. But that's something you would look at in the future and probably set up another committee to take a look at. It's how I've seen it done in the past. Not necessarily how you have to do it, but that's normally what happens.
Yeah, I think it's just good to set proper expectations so that people know that we will reuse them in some shape or form based on a committee of sorts. Thank you.
Counselor Shaw.
Could you tell me a little bit more about the petition to the Superior Court on the basis of the auditor's recommendation? I mean, to say it's an unfunded mandate, I'm not sure exactly what plans, what you're doing.
We're just, we're kind of waiting, as I said, to get the actual costs, like the council president said, and then we'll, council can give us direction on how they want to do it.
The cost of what?
What the actual unfunded mandate would be.
What's the cost to Winterup for the, you know, 880 units potentially and other things? So we have to gather the costs and then, you know, go from there. Because we did receive some grant funding to put the zoning in place, so we did get some money from the state. So we need to determine what those costs are, and then we can, like we said, we'd be back at a future meeting, obviously, it was only a week ago, so.
No, that's...
And sort of wait and see, too. I mean, as we know, Middleborough and, I think, Marshfield have filed lawsuits.
I think there's three or four.
Yeah, two that I've heard of, anyway, so, yeah. But, so, you know, more to follow on that, we certainly have some time, so.
How much time do we have?
We have until July 14th.
Interim compliance, so July 14th, so, yeah.
July 14th, but you'll stay on that, right?
Absolutely, yeah. We've talked about it almost, you know, a couple of times, at least a day, if not a week, anyway, so.
Okay. I'll be listening.
You got it.
Counselor Tassina.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Manager, thanks for your report. Appreciate it, as always, I'm glad to hear that the fiscal impact study is moving forward. I do have a question on, as to how many units we would provide as a, what the president called a plug-and-play, right? So we have about 900 units under the current zoning that we are living under, that of capacity that are unbuilt, right? So would we say that our unbuilt capacity is 900, so we're going to add another 880 on top of that and say the unfunded mandate is the difference between the 900 and the 880? Or are we just going to say it's 880 and ignore our existing capacity that's unbuilt? We need to, we need to plan for that. We need to plan for the existing capacity, unbuilt capacity, now, before we even address an unfunded mandate or talk about 3A. We should be focused on what is already coming with or without 3A. And so to use the fiscal analysis to create an unfunded mandate number is, I think we're a little way, we're way ahead of ourselves when we haven't even come up with what it would cost the town to take care of the existing capacity that's unbuilt.
Well, this model will work for 10 units, it'll work for 1,000 units. So, I mean, you plug, we plug in the numbers, whatever we want. You know, you can put in, you know, 1,700 units, right? Nine plus eight, you know, whatever. You can put in that, you can put in whatever you want for a number of units, and that'll tell the cost. And then we can decide what we want to do with the data. The council can decide if you want to, you know, we know the 880 is the unfunded mandate, but you also want to add on top of that, oh, by the way, we've got these expenses from units that we have from our own zoning, you know, so.
Yeah, well, had we passed the planning board's existing plan, there'd be no unfunded mandate, because there'd be no new units. So we'd just be dealing with the existing unbuilt capacity of 900. Give or take some units, I'm not, I say 900 because that's what we've been talking about.
Yeah, I've heard anywhere from 700 or 900. I mean, in the next 10 years, I think, you know, 400 or 500 for sure, you know?
A little less than that, but we have, I think, 220 on the books, like basically.
Yeah, 158 plus the veterans.
Some of those 20 are replacing existing units on the fire. But the CBD has roughly six something in the number, and then there's the waterfront zoning also. But that, again, those aren't unfunded mandates, because that stuff we're doing.
Those are stuff we decided, right?
But that's, and that's why the cost analysis, that's why I kind of say plug-and-play, because we're not saying do a cost analysis for 125 or 550 or 800. We're doing a cost analysis where we could be in charge of the number.
Reuse the model, which is a good, that makes it a better investment. I totally, I understand that. I think, do we have anybody who looked at our current zoning that will be able to tell us a good number? Like, so where's, I was saying 900, if it's only 700, that's a lot better. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think we did that when we were looking, you know, to get that, you know, I don't know, exemption, whatever word you want to say, to go from 880 to 660. That was them taking into account how many units would be in the CBD and factoring out commercial units, because it's, commercial units aren't part of 3A, right? So that's how they kind of got to that 220 number. But I think we, during the analysis, we thought there was like 640-ish potential units if the CBD was built out to capacity.
And then, does that, does that piece account for the stuff that gets passed by the zoning board of appeals, too? Because there's other stuff that, there's like one-off projects where they'll get a board of appeals approval that's outside of our existing zoning criteria.
Yeah, I mean, that's more for us, right? It's not, that's not part of an unfunded mandate, because then...
No, I know, that's what I'm worried about.
Right, like you say, to use it in different situations. Right, that we can look and see.
We're looking at 700 or so.
You know, two more firefighters, two more police officers, an additional schooling space, whatever, right? That's the information we're looking for.
That was my question.
Thank you.
Counselor Ella.
Just related to Counsel Tassinaire's questions. Tony, two things. One is, can we get a look at the scope of work that RKG is working on? That would be helpful to have.
Yeah, he passed it up before to the council, I know. You may actually get a copy.
If you could.
Yeah, redistribute it.
And then the second, I like the idea of the plug-and-play model. I think that's the right way to sort of think about it. But in terms of the current zoning and what we're exposed to, even if 3A disappears, how do they deal with the unit size mix? Is there a standard that's being used based upon metropolitan? Like, how many one-bedrooms, how many two-bedrooms, how many three-bedrooms per thousand, say, 100 units that get produced?
I would, I don't, I could guess that they would probably do an analysis of our current housing and what was developed over the years and how we got to where we're at, and probably use that to apply percentages. But, I mean, I could ask Eric specifically how they do that.
Yeah, it would be great to get that methodology, because that certainly would impact both the fees that come out of it, the property taxes that come out of it, as well as impacts on schools, et cetera. Because obviously, one-bedroom units don't produce a lot of kids and all that. So it would be good to just understand the methodology.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Old business there is non-new business. Discuss town council rules and procedures. You know, we noticed on the charter, there's a process set up that every five years. So we thought it would be a good idea to, I'm going to send this to Rules and Ordinances for them to take a look at our own town council rules and procedures. Is there things in there, items in there that should be addressed or taken a look at? You know, we do it for the charter, we should do it for ourselves as well. So there are roughly 12 items, and they're on the website. If you go to the town, Town and Winterup website, you go to Town Council page, Town Council Rules and Procedures are there. Like I say, it's 12 items, various topics. So I would like Rules and Ordinances to just take a look at them, and if they have any recommendations on items that we should address ourselves. Yes?
Is there a way that we could have some discussion about that? I mean, you and I have talked about the fact, just about our committee groupings and how, what they look like.
Yes, I think that's, yeah.
And so, I mean, I'm not on Rules and Ordinances, but I would like to have an opportunity to talk about this as a council.
Well, I think we definitely, when it comes out of Rules and Ordinances, we're going to have an opportunity to talk on it, and we could have an opportunity, assuming there's not more than five of us, at a subcommittee meeting, if you know, when the subcommittee, it might take a couple of subcommittees. But there are definitely things like consolidation of committees, which we started a couple of years ago, but we could definitely go further. So, yeah, I think the council needs to weigh in on this.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counselor Tassinaire.
So I'm glad we brought this up, because I was planning on filing, I'm not sure it will fall under Council Rules and Procedures, but a way that we could enter executive session for the review of committee appointments. Because it does say in the charter that the town council shall investigate, shall, not may, shall investigate each candidate for appointment. And that falls under both policymaking member bodies and non-policymaking member bodies. I know I asked you in the last meeting about the ORC appointments and whether or not it was a policymaking body, or what. You say, no, with all due respect, I disagree, because they create policy or they propose policy for the council to then pass. Now, I don't want to rehash those appointments, because I think you made some great choices, and I really think a lot of your appointments are on point. But we have a duty as a council to investigate each applicant for appointment, whether it's to the policymaking board or non-policymaking board, per the charter. So we should have a process, and I don't know if that, maybe you could, well, maybe I should talk to Attorney Sip.
No, that could be something more in ordinances, potentially. That could come out of the charter review. Or, I mean, it's definitely something, I do have an opinion here from Attorney Sipletta on that, on the ORC confirming what I had thought. But then, I will pass this out, I just got this today, so I will make sure that everyone on the council gets it. But that's definitely something that could be, again, everything's on the table that we can legally do as far as the council rules, that doesn't affect the charter. But, yeah, I don't see why not.
As a way, I mean, speaking of committee members, or multiple, we call them multiple member bodies in the charter, right? We should have a way to review these members in a closed session so that whoever is not chosen is not offended or doesn't get embarrassed by not being chosen by the committee.
Well, I don't think we could, I think we can do, you know, on certain point, you can't do that in a closed session, though, that would definitely be an open session.
You could do that in executive session as a matter of personnel matter.
They're not personnel, if they're not on a board or a committee, they're just citizens.
If we're appointing them to a board or committee, they're then, they're then personnel. They're special personnel.
But every appointment, if somebody's, if I'm making an appointment to replace a counselor, that's an open session thing, right? We talk about it, we bring up the names, we have appoint, we have people making recommendation on names. Same thing on a planning board or a zoning board of appeals. Those are going out with an application usually for policymaking board like that. But I, we will check on, see if it's what we can do in executive session or not. I mean, I like to do most stuff in an open session.
Pretty sure we can do that in executive session. But to review everybody's applications in an open way among the councils, that, I would say that would require an executive session, because that's privileged information. If someone's applying with their resume and their information, may not be public. That's, I would say that's a personnel matter, we could check on it.
I know, you know, on, like a town manager appointment, for example, everything's private until we get to the finalists, right? Because they have jobs, they have other stipulations that they don't want their names maybe out. And then once you get to finalist, which anybody being appointed would be a finalist, it's public information usually. But we'll, you know, again, it's worth taking a look at.
Right, so, yeah, the appointments would be public, but the consideration piece, where we discuss among the council, where we, you know, where we shall investigate, as we investigate, as a council, we should be able to do that in executive session.
We'll take a look at that.
I mean, it does apply in both of these, it does say clearly in both sections of this 2-10 that the council shall investigate each candidate. No one in the council received any of the applications for the ORC appointments before the, before the committee was announced last week. I didn't see them, I don't think any of the other councils saw them, had a chance to review or investigate. It's a duty of the council, shall investigate. I mean, I don't know what Attorney Sip found in his memo, but...
He'll say there'll be a two-page item going out tonight to all the councils.
But shall is clear in all legal language. We must do it.
And going to, back to public comment. I missed it out.
Check out, please, one. Is there an accurate count on people that watch this council on Zoom? And is there an accurate count on people that watch it on WCAT? I'm not sure how far this message goes out to people in the town. Just out of curiosity, if that can be explained at the meeting. As far as A Person A on the town council, I'm not so sure if this is going to show up on WCAT or Zoom. And I want to reiterate that there was a letter sent by A Person A to Tibbetts, not demanding that the state put up shelters for the people that's, especially on Wall Street. I saw a poor one, I almost saw, but I said, I'll get myself in trouble. Leaning against a pole in four inches of ice and slush. We put the bus station down there for safety, for other reasons, safety or whatever. But now, we don't provide people with a shelter to stay and wait for the bus. I hope that A Person A gets back on the hawth and demands the state take care of the situation. As far as this drawing or rendering or whatever it is, sketch, at the time, this was proposed to the forum on 6/7/17. I called it a monstrosity. It's an outrage that someone would even think about proposing these structures on parkland. The thinking is clearly skewed. Thinking for this project, to put it on paper, is, it just proves to everybody's point that A Person A doesn't have any consideration for Article 97, disposition of land, or any other type of open space. And as far as his conduct last week, other week, whatever it was, he apologized, only for two incidents. He talked to me that way one time. Obviously, he talked to Councilwoman Swoll. But there were three other incidents of A Person A pointing his finger and swearing in somebody's face after these meetings were over. So that's five. And someone mentioned to me the other night, or whatever it was, that's strike five. How many strikes does a person get to be totally obnoxious? And basically, A Person A, totally obnoxious all the time. Obnoxious here, obnoxious everywhere he goes, especially in this room. Something has to be done other than a censorship. I looked up the definition of censorship, and it's a little bit muted one way or the other. So it's not enough to be sensitive.
Thank you. Any other comments? Karen?
Karen Travis, please. I'm trying to wrap my head around what Counsel Tassinaire was saying. Because of what he is saying, that you want to vet every person that applies for a non-elected committee in executive session, by the open meeting law, does that person have to be present? I mean, I don't know, and I'm not looking for an answer. I don't know if in the open meeting laws, does it say that you can actually vet somebody in executive session without that person being present? I don't know. I, I'm not 100% sure on that one. But I guess that's just what I'm trying to figure out in my mind.
Thank you. Anything else?
We have one in general.
Yes.
Kathleen Puccio, if you want to mute, please.
Hi, Kathleen Puccio, 49 Long Island. President Leary already addressed some of the potential reductions with regard to the override for the schools not passing. And I know it's going to be too placative, but I think it's just so incredibly important just to be... incredibly important, um, just to be heard again. I'm gonna be reading directly from the facts, um, that was put out by the override committee. Um, so again, just to reiterate these because they're just so incredibly important. And frankly, um, I think the town council is really not spending nearly enough time discussing, um, an election that's unable to. Um, so I think, you know, I've really appreciated the town council members, you know, President Latieri's doing a great job. Um, Councilor Swob is doing an excellent job with bringing this up. But, um, we really need to start talking about this election more. Um, so if we could please start to focus. Um, so again, potential reductions, we're looking at reduction of staff for K through twelve, including specials, AP classes, language courses, mental health services, resulting in increased class sizes from K to eight, from a current average of twenty to twenty-two, to an average of twenty-six to thirty-two in K through eight. That's a huge increase. Um, looking at potentially twenty-five plus in, um, grades nine through twelve. We're looking at added and increased fees for school programs, club, athletics, curricular. Again, we're looking at potentially elimination of middle school athletics for increased fees. Increasing fees is going to absolutely, um, really hurt certain populations of families that cannot afford increased fees. Um, so really, how awful would that be that, you know, Johnny Smith, whose parents make six figures, he's allowed to play football, but, you know, Mary Smith, whose parents only make thirty thousand, she's not allowed to play hockey. Um, I don't think that's a road which there wants to go down. Um, again, some, again, potential cuts, looking at eliminating or reducing non-mandated programs and services, instituting fees for summer and other academic community programs, reduction of instruction materials, which includes a freeze on repair or the technology and basic supplies, cuts to textbooks, materials, software licenses. Um, you know, there's gonna be major, major cuts if this override does not pass. Um, some will, you know, think of whether it's President Latieri or me stating some of these potentials as fear mongering. This isn't fear mongering, this is reality. We are in desperate times right now. We can all discuss how we've gotten here, you know, I'd ask, we'd like to discuss more how, you know, our state and federal government representatives, um, are not properly funding public education, because that's a huge problem. Um, we have certain mandated programs that we must have, um, in our public school systems that frankly are either underfunded or not funded at all. And to come to a point, great point earlier, um, with regards to, you know, there's certain programs that the school cannot cut, plain and simple. We can't cut them, because if we do, then we can't open our schools. Um, so again, I just, I really hope that people look at the information that's being put out, you know, by the school committee, by the, um, you know, the guests for the override committee, which again, I'm not on, I won't say that. I'm just a, just a resident like the rest of us. Um, but again, I, I really hope that we can stop focusing on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other? All right. Um, tomorrow night, I'll be hosting a meeting for discussion on the debt exclusion as well as the override. Um, so for the fire station as well as the school override, and that will be here at the Javi Room at six o'clock. I encourage people, if you have questions at all, please feel free to come by. Um, on March seventh, vote by mail ballots will begin to go out for completed absentee applications received by the town clerk's office. Um, March thirty-first is the last day to apply for a vote by mail application. You can actually apply literally online at the town clerk's, um, page on the Winthrop website. Um, it's as simple as you could either go, you can print it, sign it, email it, you could fax it, or you could literally, uh, take a picture of it and, and scan it and go back to the town clerk.
They'll take anything.
So, encourage you, I, I believe, my understanding is that Matt Crombie, the principal at the high school, is going to hold a voter registration day at the high school. So, um, thank Matt for doing that and, and thanks for the children to be involved. Um, civics is an incredible lesson that a lot of us have lost over the years and, and that's good to see that coming back. Um, Commission on Disabilities hosting a transitioning into adulthood at the Winthrop High School Shapiro Auditorium. Uh, that is on March nineteenth, six thirty to eight PM. Again, the last day to register to vote. So, if you're not registered, you still have eligibility up until March twenty-six to come in and register to vote. Um, again, I, I thank, we have two firefighters here, deputy chief, chief, um, they've been constants and, uh, it's greatly, it's greatly appreciated to see the presence here. Um, I know the council appreciates it and I'm sure the citizens do as well. Um, thanks the school committee for taking the time last night to really get in depth and talk about the numbers. And it's one thing to just ask for something, it's another thing to make sure you try to articulate it as clearly as possible. And I think they've done a fantastic job. Again, the decisions are made by the voters, but, um, they've done a great job of outlining exactly where we are, how we got here, and what the ramifications could be either way. So, I thank them for that and I thank Superintendent for her hard and diligent work on this. And, uh, again, the election, last word we'll say is the election is on a Saturday this year, special election Saturday, April fifth. Voting will be the same as a regular election. It will be from seven AM to eight PM. Precincts one, two, three, five, and six will vote at the Old Middle School on Pauline Street. Precinct six will vote at Golden Drive, at O'Connell Hall.
Precinct four?
Precinct four, I'm sorry. Geez, I was doing well. Once again, precincts one, two, three, five, six at the Old Middle School on Pauline Street, precinct four at O'Connell Hall at Golden Drive.
I just wanted to say the absentee ballots, we can accept those until April fifth. We can, right up until the date of election, we can accept those.
Yes, but you can only request, yeah.
So, we have those.
And, um, I will ask and potentially that the town clerk look into having some, and I'm sure you're gonna be around here anyway, but Fridays, we are usually closed, but maybe on the fourth, we'll have some presence here if people have questions or something they need to drop off. So, I thank the town clerk for doing that. Uh, Consul Swob, just to.
Just real quick, I just, if you want to see this, I lived here. Come get it.
All right. Is there a motion? Uh, great job.
One quick announcement. Uh, in the next probably two weeks, uh, the part of the capital plan, when we start now valve exercising townwide, you may, uh, notice some discolored water in your fixtures. It's just, you know, movement of water in the mains. It's, it's harmless. Uh, you just gotta run your faucets for a minute or two, it will clear. But I didn't want people to think, I mean, certainly call with any questions to DEW, but that would be, uh, one of the, um, side effects of, of, uh, a very needed maintenance in a valve exercising program, so.
Ed, this is public relations. So, and since you just brought that up, can you just explain to the public how people will see, um, you know, that testing was done and that levels are high? And, and can you just explain that to ease their minds?
Sure, sure. So, DEP requires us to do, uh, bimonthly bacteria sampling. Um, what that is, is, uh, where we put, the town of Winthrop is required to produce, uh, twenty samples per month. Um, over the last couple of years, uh, during the warmer months of, of the year, um, we've tested high in total chloroform. Uh, total chloroform on its own is, is not harmful bacteria, but it's an indicator bacteria. Uh, it's an indicator that the environment could be more suitable for more harmful bacteria, like E. coli or, or such. Uh, I want to be perfectly clear, Winthrop has never tested positive for E. coli. Um, however, uh, you know, we have, uh, during the months, primarily June to September, uh, in the warmer temperatures, we have tested higher, uh, at several of our sample sites for total chloroform. Um, what that means, uh, uh, basically, I want to, I want to try to say it in, in a way that doesn't alarm people. It, again, it, it, it indicates the environment could be suitable for, for more harmful bacteria. After every positive test, DEP requires you to do a, a full assessment of your, of your sampling round, which we've done every single time. Uh, and the ending result of every assessment, uh, has been the result of, of low chlorine residuals. So, chlorine is added to the water supply to keep bacteria out. It enters Winthrop at about two to two-point-five milligrams per liter. Um, as water's sick stagnant in pipes, especially in warmer temperatures, naturally chlorine residuals drop off. Um, what have we done to combat that? We've, we've increased our hydrant flushing. People see hydrants running sometimes during the summer months and, you know, sometimes we get, well, why are we wasting, why are we wasting water just running hydrants? It's to move aged water and to bring in more chlorine into the system. Additionally, we've initiated two projects, uh, one being the retrofit of the PIB in, uh, the, the water tower to improve cycling within the million gallon stamp pipe. That was one of our sample sites that was getting these, these hits. Uh, what was happening is we weren't getting a good drawdown cycle and the water was aging out in the tank and giving us, uh, TC positive hits. Um, so that project should help that. Another project that I just mentioned is the valve exercising program, which again, will be running hydrants, will be exercising valves, making sure that all of the valves within the system are in the open position so that we get the proper flow of water throughout the system. It's routine maintenance. Uh, chloroform, again, sounds, it's, the word in itself sounds harmful. Uh, it's part of our protocols. Nobody has ever been in, in danger. E. coli has never been present in our system. Uh, and we, these several projects that are underway and should be completed in the next several months should certainly help us going into the next summer months of the warmer temperature, uh, to make sure that our chlorine residuals stay at the adequate level.
Thank you, and I appreciate you explaining that. I know you've done it before in the past and you always do it articulately and as you do your other duties as well, but we appreciate that and thank you. And we, we know that if there was an issue, you would let us know. Uh, before I adjourn, Consul Ayala had one.
Just had a technical question. Uh, when you and the town clerk were talking about the, the election cycle and absentee ballots. I like the idea of the Saturday election, uh, but what I worry about first, you know, first Saturday of April, beautiful day, seventy degrees, everyone goes to ball fields or wherever they go, and it's not in everybody's brain. Uh, we thinking about perhaps a special outreach effort to make sure people are aware of the date, like posters and businesses and those kinds of things? Is that?
Yes, I, I, we've already, we're about to reach out to Woodside to see if they would put it up on the board for us. We will also have the boards out for the town on both end, both entrances of the town, uh, to make sure people are well aware of that. Uh, we'll be putting some stuff in the transcript as well. Consul clerk?
And we also have the constable for each location, for each precincts. They put warrants on every businesses.
Yep.
We have all the information, yeah.
The school might put it on, yes, to a corner, yeah.
Yes, yes, on the sign. That's a good idea.
That's great. Well, thank you for that. Appreciate that.
All the school signs, yeah. All right, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Consul Swob, second by Consul Munson. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, others in favor, say aye. I always note, motion is adjourned.